The Towns webpage for review.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we had a work session for McDonald's. Is there anything planned Nick for two weeks from now?
Yep, the Hadley landscaping service facility like to be on for nine twenty-two, so September twenty-second.
Okay. Um, again, I got Emily and you've got a big, I don't have any video anymore.
Oh, I've shared my screen, so the agenda should be up.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, I see it Emily.
Yeah, I see it, and I see Peter too.
Do you want to try logging out and back in again?
I just got a big purple circle with EG.
Which is.
Strange.
Is anybody else having difficulty seeing the shared screen?
I can see it.
Okay, I just want you, let me just.
You're looking at a different screen on Teams.
Alright, just a second.
Yeah, yeah, you're looking at the login screen.
Oh Doug, you're here.
I'm here, I'm here this week.
You're here this week.
All set.
Thank you guys.
Yep.
Alright, so the work session was McDonald's. Nick, I was about to say if you have anything lined up for, I know we have a, we're waiting for some electronic stuff coming from Cravat Drive. Do we, we won't, we won't do a work session until we see the electronic. Any other people in line?
Yep, the Hadley landscaping facility for the twenty-second work session.
Okay. Alright, and let's have approval for the minutes for the previous meeting.
I'll make a motion Peter, it's Kathy.
I'll second.
Nathan, thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
And.
Steve abstained, wasn't there?
Okay, well you can, you can, if you read the notes in minutes, you're allowed to, but we'll, we'll take the.
We have a forum, so we're good.
Alright, so Mike, it's, the floor is yours. I have, I have to admit some personal disappointment that I'd love to have seen that building you were gonna build a cornerstone crossing, but I think that.
I know. It's incredible really how things can change on a dime, you know, after this COVID thing, and how everybody just disappeared.
Yeah.
You know, so, and that's what brings us here tonight, is the size of the project down there probably will have to be, oh, I'm not sure if it's gonna be scaled back or entirely changed yet, but moving on, I'm in a position where I really need to get my, a building up for my, my business. We have a consulting business that has a lot of electronics, it's a high-tech business. I need a structure that has a garage door that'll be used very infrequently for demonstrations. We're gonna have a, if you look at the floor plan, on the south side of the conference room, there is a.
Go to the floor plan, Emily please. Thank you.
Alright. On the floor plan, the south wall of the conference room, which is almost in the center of the building, that's all a glass wall. We'll be inviting engineering groups, private facility managers, hopefully some politicians to do lunch and learns to show our services being, you know, cost-effective in maintaining infrastructure. And to do that, we wanna showcase all our technology, all lined up, all in one place, so that we've got a good representation of what we do and how we do it. So, even though I called that a garage door, it's gonna be used very infrequently, it's a very, everything is clean, the one mistake on the floor plan there, all the flooring all throughout the entire building is all the same, it's an LVT. And that will be a completely finished area. There's no mechanical grease, anything, it's a very clean man cave-ish look, I guess you would wanna call it, for lack of a better word. Other than that, the exterior of the building, we're changing very little, and I'm asking for a little flexibility, we've got a ramp that pokes out into the parking lot on the east side. It's really in a bad spot, don't, we don't need that handicap accessibility, there is handicap to the north coming in.
Emily, could you, could you Google that? I know that, we know where it is on the site, but I think they ought to see it, because it's actually kind of a work of art, but it's quite a structure. And I understand you don't need it, and, but they should, the board should see this.
Sure, okay.
And it's proximity, it really just takes traffic from the parking lot.
It really does, it takes, takes up a space that we could use, and maintaining it, we're gonna be redoing, resurfacing the whole parking lot and striping it, and it's just awkward.
Now you've cut down some trees there Mike, could you just give us a little background as to what you've cut down and why?
Yeah, we had a tree, a decorative tree next to the building on the south side, and it was overhanging the roof, and we're gonna be flipping the roof off and putting a new one on, and it's just, you know, the debris on a flat roof, I'm, I'm not crazy about flat roofs, but I'm putting a new one on, and I don't want the leaves to plug up the drains that are on the roof, which has happened in the past and caused probably the last tenants, ten tenants, all kinds of problems. We're gonna redesign the drain system on the roof. The other things that were taken down were just, you know, junk trees that were dead, but we're leaving that, those two really large ones in the corner, the southeast corner.
You gonna put any more back?
We do like to, on the perimeter there, I've gotta work with whoever the new owner of the mall is, if you can look at my property lines, it's a little dicey, but yes, I would like to landscape with evergreens, things that are green, you know, throughout the year.
It looks like most of the opportunity for camping is off your property.
It is, and I had some contact with the manager of the mall, and he was very receptive of me, you know, working with him there, and also at the entrance at Kenny Road, which is not my property, and I'm hoping to clean that up if I can, you know, he just didn't wanna, you know, cause any more dispute between the mall's owner and himself, that's the only thing he said to me, he was very positive about me being there, and I offered to clean it up at my expense, and he was all for that. So if, if that was okay, I'd like to do that also.
Yeah, we'll just need permission from the mall owner, and we can certainly consider it.
Okay, well, by considering, do we, do I have to do a plan, or?
Yes.
I, it's all the dead stuff that's out there.
We'd like a plan too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can we just, a plan would be nothing, I guess. Okay, go ahead.
No, that's okay, you know, if you're, are you done? We, we have some comments relative to traffic flow and some other things, and the roof equipment, because that actually can be readily seen as you come down, because the topography is such. But I'm gonna turn it over to the board to make some comments relative to traffic and that ingress and egress with the, at some point, the mall hopefully will have new life, and that intersection is one that is somewhat complicates things coming out of the, the garage.
Gotcha, um, down, like on the west corner of my property, that intersection you're talking about?
No, well, that, the, that intersection where you see the arrows are in, that's right near the garage, and that, that is a tough angle. If, if we were talking earlier in our own work session about moving it, show, Emily, show where we're talking about, somewhere there, so there could be a, some, not the symmetry, but so, some reasonable flow without interfe, with people coming around from the garage and the entrance into the mall.
It's a precarious corner.
Yeah, I'm just here verbally tonight.
Peter, this is, are we looking at moving it again?
Right, right there, you know, maybe up a little bit, but in that, in that entrance there, I think would make a lot of sense. You don't have a lot of options, and traffic flow is gonna be difficult.
And just to be clear Peter, you're also saying to close off the south entrance, so we only have a single entrance, single egress and e-exit out of that property, or relocating that to the north, so that it's more of an intersection than it is a driveway, driveway off of that corner.
Yeah, anticipating a great deal of traffic at some point in the, hopefully near future.
It's not the best intersection though, it's offset.
Yeah, I know, we can't figure out, you can't put it anywhere else Steve.
So how, how, how old is this building, and how long has it been in this configuration with this?
Nineteen sixty.
So, so for sixty years with operations of the mall, and the, and, and the road egress, egress, ingress, it's been in this configuration, and do we have reason to believe that it's been a real problem?
Well, there hasn't been much traffic for the last twenty-two years.
Uh, but, it's from, really from the sixties, there was enough traffic then. I, I don't really see what the problem is, as it is.
I'd rather have it offset the way it is now than to have it's offset by only twenty feet.
I think offset by twenty feet is more dangerous.
Exactly.
Well, we could, it's still a concept review, and just bringing out all different facets. While we're on the traffic flow, what kind of truck are you anticipating putting in for display purposes, and how does that affect your parking and your, your, I know you said it would be limited use, but you still, it's a garage door, and it will have to go in and out.
I want to layer one on top of that Peter, and is putting LVT down to drive a car on top of the best?
That's correct, yeah, we put a filler below that that will totally support it, so I've already got a guarantee that what we're putting down will support it, and it's a brand new, there are twenty-five hundred through three-quarter ton vans filled with electronics, they have to be very clean for the services we provide, so it's a, it, we don't change, none of my people change their own oil, there, none of that happens. It's not a, it's a demo room, it's not a garage.
Yeah, no, I remember it from the cornerstone proposal, and it's a van, what size of van is it? Is it like a step van, or is it just a, a large XL van?
It's just a, a three-quarter ton van, you know, the twenty-five hundred Chevys you see everywhere.
Thank you. How about the exterior of the building in elevations?
Right now, we're getting our prices in from the, oh, the companies that repair the drive it, you know, the insulation, and then they expose the material over it, my, you know, my generation, I call it drive it, that, we're looking to see if that can be repaired. The other exterior corners with the NYLD signs are, those are metal clad, there was a built-up system that's underneath with channels that these, the metal locks into. The exact system is on Marcellus Casket Company downtown, and the coloring is exactly the same too, I've looked at a lot of buildings, and the color samples I provided don't really give, give it justice what you, when you see the color in person.
What is the example you're citing Mike?
I'm sorry?
What, what, the example that you're citing?
I dropped one off to Nick today, that had the colors and the metal material that was for the, the exterior, and then I also provided a picture of Marcellus Casket, which again, doesn't really do it justice, but it's, it's a good-looking building, the blues are, are somewhat the colors of my website, the NYLD.com, and it'll be attractive, I can guarantee, and I think it's gonna be better than the pink building that's, that's sitting there right now.
Please get rid of the pink.
The, I'm, when I, when I'm building this, I'm looking at a complete retrofit, we're talking about the landscaping, the parking lot will be repaved, restripped, every bit on the outside will be new, new roof, this will be a good-looking addition over there, and hopefully it entices somebody to buy the mall, it sounds like they got something going, and they, they get in there and do a good job.
So, are the light fixtures on the building up to code, and has it been, photometric been done for the site?
You know, it's had the same, yeah, it's had the same lighting for a number of years, but I do plan on having my security and lighting guy in there shortly.
The drawings that we're looking at, say, existing light fixture, existing luminescent storefront, so we'd understand that those things are, we're getting a refresh except for those things?
Well, what the blue areas are, that's, that's metal cladding, all the other area is the existing drive it, that will be that dove gray that you have is a sample.
But I'm asking. Yeah, go ahead Doug. It says existing storefront, and there was, there's a note about existing.
Yeah, those are windows, those are the windows, existing storefront.
You're not replacing those?
No.
I think the light fixtures are gonna need to be updated.
Actually, the only thing I'm repla, yeah, lighting and all that's gonna be all brand new, but the, those windows, there's a few panes that were bad, and the contractor that's doing the renovation for me is replacing any windows that are bad, but it's still gonna look the same.
Mike, on your, the roof, it looks so clean and, and sterile and, and perfect, but undoubtedly you're gonna have some, some kind of equipment on top of there, and you can, it's such a low profile and, and flat, as you pointed out, how are you, you know, how are you planning to, to screen any units that are up there?
You know, it's interesting, when you go up there, it looks like a minefield, there is more things sticking through that roof than you can imagine, over the years, because the heating was so poor, they popped holes everywhere through there for all these individual heaters, all those are gonna be removed, and we're gonna put, you know, the, the heating cooling units, there'll be two of them up there. So we're gonna clean everything that's there, the problem I have is the way it was construction, constructed, whether I can get screening that can be attached strong enough to cover the two units. I've got the specs right here, I'm looking at the height of thirty-three inches, top to bottom, for the, you know, the five-ten, five-ton units that are going up there.
Do they sit on any type of a curb, or?
I'm sorry?
Do they sit on any type of a curb? Like what is the, the distance above the parapet that these units are gonna sit?
Now, we're raising the corners by eighteen inches, so that'll give us about twenty inches, so yeah, we're gonna stick up probably a foot above the, the additional, because we're adding something on the edge all the way around, so you're gonna end up with about twelve inches above that. And I'm vacillating on the screening that you're looking for, just because I don't know if I can attach it to something solid enough that will keep it from not blowing off.
Well.
I'm sorry?
You're redoing the roof?
Yes, we're peeling off one layer and putting another layer down.
Well, that's a great opportunity to put some inkling system in for some screening.
Did, you've got an opportunity, you're, you're adding these blue metal panels which extend above the roofline, is there a way that you could maybe make those a little higher and use those as part of the screening?
If they would line up with where they're positioned, I don't believe so, they're gonna be more towards the middle, now there, it could be a, a way to, to raise everything, but then you're, you're starting to change the look of the building quite a bit, so that would be.
The units on, on the, on the ground?
They were there before, and I know they've had vandalism, and I just just don't keep them up, everything clean and up on the roof, and then, then when they're on the ground, they're on that side that, they'd be on the south side, that's the only place you can put them.
Yeah, and then I think if, I think if they're gonna be on the roof, then we're gonna need to see some sort of screening, you will see those units, I don't think they can just sit up there by themselves, so.
Yeah, look at that.
You know, I, I, I know that's, you know, kind of a, I know it's your opinion, and I'm, I'm looking for the best-looking building I can get, that is a concern of mine, and if it's really ugly, I would want to deal with that. I'm, is, is, is that a fundamental, I've gotta do it, yes or no?
Yeah, I think, yes, I think you have to screen it or put them down below. My preference is be below and screen them with some kind of security fencing, that, you know, that would be, you know, lockable or something to, I just think that would be much better. The other problem with this is, is that the east or the opposite side, so I guess that would be the west side, where that ramp emulates from, and around the corner, you can see the roof, you're up about ten feet, so you can really see the roof quite specifically. Now, I'm, I mean, we're looking out for your interest too, it's, we're not just trying to do this to, move things hard for you.
Well, I think if you just let me build the building, it'll end up better than you guys are talking about, putting a security fence around two condensing units has gotta be the ugliest idea I think I've heard tonight, besides the intersection.
Excuse me Mike, I think, I didn't say a security fence, I just said a fencing, a screening that could be lockable, you know, I, this is our job to make this look, you know, we have mutual interest in this, we don't just advocate walking away from somebody's design, this is, all of us have, you know, opinions, and this is a concept review, and we're entitled to express them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have any real objections to the layout and design that you have put forth today, I think what we're doing is looking at the roof furniture that's up there, and making sure that it is adequately screened, so that it's not a, you know, visual distraction deterrent from the rest of the building.
Okay. I like, I like, I like the idea of raising the metal, the blue metal panels up, because they act as a sign band that gives you better visual interest of the building and can cause attention to yourself better at the same time.
Right, it's a matter of proportion, you know.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent with that.
I agree.
It depends on the height of the equipment and the width of the panel. Easy enough to look at.
Yep.
I guess the whole idea with the rooftop is that you're letting a lot of ductwork go, it has to go where it's needed, probably over that conference room, and, you know, where, where meeting facilities, they don't necessarily dive with where your tallest panels of the building are, so I think the screening has to be a, an independent element, probably.
Okay, we also get a color match screen, something that, you know, ties to the blue, that's the same up there, so the whole thing ties together. It's not gonna be that large.
No, it's a matter of researching it and putting it together, I mean, I, you know, with this preliminary, I mean, I've been looking at the, the building a lot longer, and, than you guys have, that's just my opinion, so.
Well, you got some, you got some ideas we've shared, and we'll have this in writing to you, you know, this is, as I said, a concept review, and we wanna get all of our thoughts out to you.
Yeah, I've got, I, if you could put it in writing, I'd like to get right back to you and get on, get on before the next thing, so we, I can move along, you know, I, I have to run a business and renovate a building, so I would like to have this move along.
We're capable of that.
Mike, can you talk a little bit to me about the number of parking spaces? I know you are showing twenty-nine, you're only required twenty-three, I just wanted to know what your parking needs were.
We're utilizing what we have there for space and maximizing it, we've got, oh, probably five cars that currently for office needs, and then, you know, we're anticipating we'd get a couple engineers at a time, so I think we're more than adequate with parking.
My, we're, we're looking actually at, at less parking if you, if you prefer and more green space.
No, I think I'd like to have, I, I think this is proportionate to the building, to be honest with you, I mean, it's unfortunate of the circulation, that travels all the way around it, but.
It's tight.
You know.
Also, let me ask about the, the truck that you have for display, as it kind of pulls into that bay, do you have, or do you feel as though what's laid out there is sufficient to pull a truck into that bay and to back it out into that drive aisle, do you have enough space, enough turning radius to do that?
Yes.
It, this isn't happening every day.
Yeah, this is like a couple times a year.
Well, still, I mean, a couple times a year, one time it takes to back a truck out and not have enough space, I mean, I'm not, yeah.
Oh no, it, it does look small on there, but there is, there's plenty of space, we actually did it with, I drove onto that little island that sticks out there, and then to simulate backing into it, and it works fine.
Okay.
Guys, I had to, I had to look into what an, an actual Chevy twenty-five hundred van was, and it's really just, it's a standard van, it's not.
No, it, it should be fine.
Yeah, there's not a big deal with it, it's not a big truck or anything.
Okay, let's move on, any issues in terms of under the overhang, you proposed some.
Artificial turf.
Artificial turf.
Is that, is that something we normally, is, is there any way to get any real grass under there?
There's awkward space on three sides of the building, now the south, the south side, yes, you know, and I, I'm all ears about landscaping that funny peninsula that sticks out, but the, what we have is we've got a curb that runs all the way around the building, and then there's this awkward anywhere from six inches to about three or four feet that is underneath, and on those three sides, I'd like to just AstroTurf it, so it looks green anyways, and then do some fancier landscape on the larger end.
Is everybody, is that something everybody would like to see, or is there other options? I, I, I don't have anything off the top of my head.
Yeah, I just wanna remind everybody that the design guidelines does speak extensively to including foundation plantings around the building, and things of varying height to break up the building facades, as well as installing the street trees around the site, and that's something that we haven't really talked about very much. So certainly that area down to the south of the building is an opportunity. Mike, I'm wondering if that could become an area like a patio space for your employees to enjoy, like.
Yeah, that's where. Yeah, we plan on that, they are, the exterior doors on that south side, that's where we would come out and then utilize that patio.
I guess I've never seen turf used as to finish material around a building, now I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna be permanently green in the middle of February?
Yeah, it's, it's popular down in Miami. Yeah, it's, uh, it's popular down in Miami, I know that. So I called around and, uh, um, you know, that, you know, you get several years out of it and you just have the guys come and replace it. It's awkward, if you go there and drive around that building, really look between that concrete curb and the building. There's all these awkward spaces that have gravel and it's just, it's just crummy looking right now, um.
I'm curious if you can incorporate some of that space into circulation for pedestrians through the site. So currently, the only spots where pedestrians come in are, are through this concrete walk and if you continue to walk up to connect to this parking at, at the, the end or continue to walk down to maybe moving handicap parking someplace that they don't have to cross the drive aisle are some options that you could look at.
They'll, they'll be able to walk on the turf.
There's a foundation of gravel and then fine gravel.
For, uh, access for the disabled, it has to be a hard surface.
Yeah, and we have that right near, the handicap parking is right across from the main entrance, so they can go directly from the striped area to the main door on a hard surface.
I think to Emily's suggestion, she was saying, is there a way to turn those two spots to the south into the accessible stalls and then not have, you know, someone who's trying to wheel their, their chair across the, the main drive aisle?
That walk isn't, um, or that area between the curb and the building is not wide enough for a path of travel, so we'd end up having to move the curb line.
Okay.
And we're not expecting a, a lot of traffic here, most days there'll probably be five or six cars in this parking lot. That's, that's, uh, probably ninety percent of the time, it's, it'll be, uh, a handful of cars.
Okay, well, let's move, move on, uh, uh, is there anything else, Emily, or, uh?
Uh, the only other comment in relation to circulation I would make is, um, you know, it's not really recommended to have perpendicular stalls for one-way circulation because people will inevitably back out and drive the wrong direction. Um, so having angled stalls in there would be more beneficial for one-way circulation. Um, and I also would need to see the aisle dimensions to see that we do have the back out space, um, for that.
Okay. Mike, if you, um, get these plans, uh, as quickly as you wanna turn around, we'll have the comments, when will we have the comments, Emily?
I can get them out tomorrow.
Okay.
Oh, great, that'd be good.
Do you really need, uh, do you really need circulation around the entire building in a circle?
You know, it's funny, uh, you know, when I bought the building, I was, I was, I, I went through that analysis, you know, to, well, you know, putting green space in there, actually, when you drive in there, I don't know, it's awfully natural to go around it. Um, it, it creates a, a, a one-way flow of traffic, which I think when you do have five or six cars, nobody's gonna, everybody's gonna do the same thing.
All five cars are gonna go in a merry-go-round, I'm, I'm just saying, we're talking about, uh, green space around this building, these narrow strips. Why not get rid of it? Get rid of that whole section and get some green space.
Cars turning around at the end.
It's, uh-
No, you could have this issue then out here.
I'd rather, I'd rather leave it.
One way through.
Again, I've pulled in there so many times every day now, a couple times a day with meeting contractors and before I purchased it, it's been for sale forever. Um, I, I, you know, I went through that analysis and I'd rather leave it the way it is.
Well, we're, we're, uh, you know, we gotta look at it too because it'll be a real, uh, it, it'll be a, uh, anchor to this whole mall, to be honest with you, and, and it, we want it to look as nice as it possibly can as well. All right.
Yeah, I'm not sure that you can, you can put that on top of my shoulders though, I mean, it's, uh, I bought it as is and it's worked for, uh, sixty years now.
Well, all we're putting on your shoulders is the design guidelines and, and our responsibility to make this the, the best project within our purview. And, uh, knowing that it's a-
I'm not changing anything outside of.
So, well, that, that you're changing the facade and you're, you're gonna be putting on roof or air conditioning, HVAC systems and you're taking out a, there's quite a bit of-
This is normal maintenance of any building that you would do.
I think, well, you, you're taking a sixty-year-old building and you're bringing it up to current standards because it's what you want to use as your company's front. So I think you wanna do the best possible job, we wanna do the best possible job. I think our suggestions are reasonable, you can review them and take a look at them and then we can discuss them at the next work session.
Yeah. And, and as soon as we get those drawings, you can schedule the next work, uh, as soon as you, we receive something, response to you from our comments, we can schedule the next work session.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. Thanks. Okay, uh, next concept review is, uh, Hadley's landscaping, uh, snow service, uh, Steve on?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, I got you, uh, do you have anybody else with you, Steve, or you?
No, I just got Dave still working here, but he's not, he's taking off.
Okay, you wanna just, uh, describe, uh, we, we got a nice, uh, uh, note from, um, Nick who would, I guess, talk to you. And, uh, you wanna just kind of summarize that quickly and, and in terms of what this building is going to accomplish, uh, for your, uh, operation?
Yeah, we wanna erect a building, we have a certain situation where we've got quite a bit of value of equipment that people really can't see because of the way we designed, uh, the property, but every winter we, we have about, you know, one point two million dollars worth of equipment that then sits in the summer and vice versa, so. Um, rather than having it exposed to the elements year round, we like to switch seasons, put equipment inside, also store some of our materials and especially with my construction business now because of the new COVID situation, um, stockpile some materials for jobs that are coming up or that drives us so that I know what's going to happen.
Will this accomplish all of the equipment, uh, that you have outside currently or will be some have to remain?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we couldn't afford to build a structure for all the equipment, we have some rather large loaders, like two to three yard loaders, um, that are used in the winter for snow management. They, they won't be able to fit inside, but, um, some of our excavators, our skid stairs, uh, our mowers, which you guys know mowers cost us about twenty-six thousand dollars a piece now. Um, so in hand tools, we have a plethora of those. So probably I'd say about ninety percent of our, our equipment in regards to excavation, snow management, landscaping will be, will be able to be in that building secure from the weather.
Okay.
So will be primarily for equipment or will you have, you know, mulch or stone or something like that inside?
We already have mulch and stone on, on our property. So it's, yeah, there's, we're not gonna put mulch.
It won't be moving inside?
Not in the building, no.
Okay.
And what do you got upstairs, uh, what, what's the upstairs?
The, the upstairs, if you could, you know, I like to design so sometimes even when I'm spending my own money, um, I, I definitely want it to look a certain way. So the upstairs, the middle, um, is gonna be, I, I, I don't know if you guys know what I, all I do, but I get commissioned to do paintings and sculptures. So the, the middle part of it's probably gonna have a second floor on it, which I can put my studio in. And then I can, you know, I can access it from both sides and then if I have a client wants to look at a piece that I'm doing for them, they can come visit. Um, and the other two sides, we just structurally did it so that we could add a second floor in the future, but our equipment, so if we're like, if we got an excavator inside and it's raining or greasing it, we gotta lift a boom, we need height. So, um, there's not gonna really be a second floor on the majority of the building for our uses.
I'm confused here, so the drawings that we're looking at show a lower level and they show a second floor?
Right, because that, yeah, I just want to pull disclosure that I designed the building to be able to have two floors, but-
If we're talking, if we're talking the envelope of the building, the envelope of the building as presented will be built, correct? And then-
I'm, I'm not, I don't wanna build the second floors on the, the bay areas except for the middle section.
So do we have, do we have an elevation that shows what you're going to build right now?
Yeah, you have elevations on what we gave you, but what, what I can tell you is, the, the only thought that we have is the second floor possibly becoming, uh, a, a drafting office or possibly an employee lounge. The other thing that we, we get involved in, in our snow management business, we can be working up to forty straight hours with, you know, two to three hour breaks, so it'd be a nice spot for my staff to be able to just come take a nap, regroup.
Steve, Steve, I, I still got confused, I apologize for being, uh, slow. Are you building the second floor or are you not building the second floor?
No, I, I designed it to have a second floor, my intent right now is not to build the second floor except for in the middle part of the building.
Okay, so we don't have a drawing of what you intend to draw, what you tend to build?
Well, uh, all I have to do is just back up one thing in CAD and take the second floor out, I just wanted to-
Okay, well, no, just to know what we're looking to approve and it has to be-
Introduction, Steve, the dormers are really acting as clear stories for the storage space, is that right?
No, 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 Steve, in this, in this scheme, he's showing his end goal development of this building. The, where the dormers are on either side of the center bay. I think Steve is saying right now that he's not going to build that second floor on either side of the center bay at this particular moment. Is that, that's accurate, Steve, is that?
Correct.
Okay.
So is the roof line going down?
You see a drawing that shows what you're gonna do?
Okay, I mean, I, I'll put the second floor in, I mean, I can just eliminate, I can eliminate, that, we, we really don't have a use for the second floor. I have use for height inside in a couple of the bays. I can just give you a drawing that backs off but shows that second floor can be put in there someday, or I'll just leave it in there and I'll tell you I'll build a second floor.
No, no, we need, we need, we need your exact drawing.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you see, whatever, whatever your plan is going to be, I mean, that, that's fine, we just wanna take a look at and understand exactly what you're gonna build right now.
So do the roof lines change?
Five to ten years with the second, second floor over those bays, that's great, we can look at it again at that point if you want, or you can just plan on doing it all right now, I mean, this is completely up to you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just being, it's all the floors, so I'll-
Yeah, no, and I think that's great, you just, we just don't wanna approve this and then have you build something that doesn't have the second story on either side.
So the roof lines, the roof lines will come down on the two side bays right now compared to the stride?
No, no, the, 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 the building structure will be, will be built the way it appears on this plan.
You, you just might add that second floor deck inside the building at a later date.
There you go.
There we go.
Got it, oh.
So the mass, the mass does not change from what we see here regardless, okay, perfect.
So the bays will be as high?
Yep.
Yeah. As clear stories, just as I said, right?
Yeah.
You got it, Steve.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a very handsome building.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's gorgeous.
It'll look nicer to the hill.
Can you, you can't, can you see the, what, how much of this building will you be able to see from, uh, whatever the main, two main roads are on the outside? Cause I know there's a great deal of, uh, topography, uh, drop off.
Okay, so there's an elevation drop, there's a berm that's already there with a, a large retaining wall. So right there where you're doing your arrow, that, that's a berm that's about sixteen to eighteen feet down to the rock, bedrock area where you see vehicles parked.
So you, how tall is your building?
Uh, I can't remember, was it twenty-four, twenty-one? Twenty-one to twenty-three.
Okay, so you would be, see very little of it from?
No, and I'm gonna leave all the foliage, you know, along the whole berm that surrounds the property anyway. And then I gave you kind of a, a quick rendering of what the front will look at like from one degree of perspective from the corner, it really won't be seen.
It'll complement your other building though quite nicely.
Yeah, when you pull into my parking lot, you look to the right, it will complement the building.
Okay.
So there, that's, that's basically what you're gonna see. Uh, that, I don't know if anybody recalls, but when I bought this property, I spent a, a, a fair amount of money, I built a thirty-five foot berm on the backside to city lights. So that, my neighbors, um, can't see anything down below. So that whole backside has a very large berm. And then we've actually put evergreens on the other side of the berm, so, yeah, that right there, that's where we, we built the berm and we carried it down, so they, I, they won't even be able to see the peak of the building, I don't believe.
I mean, it's too bad, it's a beautiful building.
Yeah, well, we, we, we wanna come to work in something nice, so.
Anything else, uh, any other comments from the board? Nope.
Nice project.
Yeah, it's a great project, uh.
Just make sure you show any building lighting and anything else.
Just curious, Steve, are you on, um, you're on septic and well out there, correct?
No, we're on, we're on public water and we are on septic. The septic design and, that was engineered and installed for my existing building was set for six toilets. So we only have two toilets in this building and we talked to the engineer who did it and he actually, uh, completed that work yesterday morning or this morning. Said that we, we can absolutely pump to it, we can handle up to almost eight toilets. And he said with the flow that we have in our buildings, we still only need it for two.
Would you put your, uh, your power electrical feeder underground to this outbuilding?
Um, the, the problem with going underground is it's setting on bedrock, we had a geologist and the engineers come and they supported our plan. Um, it, we can't go down because right there we're sitting on, I think it's a thirty-six inch ledge of limestone. So what we worked out is there's an elevation drop from Taylor Road to where the building is of, I believe it's eight feet. So we will be running it and then if you look on the other plan, there's a boulder wall, actually, I think it's on that one too. We will be insulating all that with five feet of earth. So as it comes into the building.
Build it up, yeah.
It's not the plan, yeah, we're gonna build it up.
Okay. Since we just, and we, we also just talked about this on the last project, where are the mechanical units for this building?
Uh, they're internal.
Inside, okay.
Yes.
Do you have any trash or any issues like that, uh, Steve, do you have a dumpster, what do you, what do you put?
We have a full-size dumpster that we've had for ten years and they come and pick it up.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they, you know, I, I don't know if anybody remembers the purpose of me buying this property, but I, I had another property and I had three thefts for the totaling about six hundred thousand dollars. So what's nice about this property is you don't even notice we have equipment here and so, you know, having a dumpster down there is perfect and having equipment down there is perfect, it's just we need to secure it, not from people, we need to secure it from the weather.
I think it'll be a nice project. Um, you wanna move to the sign, I see you keep flashing that up, I, where, where you're on, uh, don't allow a multi-tenant sign. Um, is that something you wanna, if you wanna, if this is something you wanna move quickly on, you wanna take that off the table and discuss it i- in, in a different time?
Yeah, we can separate the issues, that, that, that is actually a separate issue, so, you know, we, we do propose that we're gonna put another entrance in, but I don't think we're gonna have signs there, again, I don't really want people knowing that, um, we have that much equipment down there, so, yeah, I'd, I'd rather just table this right now.
Okay, do you have any lights, uh, speaking of, uh, the security, are you, I didn't see if there were lighting plans, uh, that you have, uh, uh, on that building, your new building?
Well, I, I, I have a, a, a thought about that, one, if I light it up, then people know something's down there. We, we like to put motion lights on there and have it available for when our crews come in, especially during the winter time when they're coming in at all hours. We, we have, we have thirty thousand dollars worth of PTZ cameras down there that are infrared. Um, so that they're, they're actual physically tracking cameras. Um, I'm not a big fan of lighting it up because of security reasons. It, 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 again, most storage, um, it's not really publicly accessible. Um, and we don't really want people to know it's there, but I'm not in a mind frame where I wanna just put up a steel pole barn. Um, I enjoy what I do and I want my people to enjoy what they do, so that's why we're going to this extent of the, the, the look and the size and, and, you know, materials we're gonna use, but I really don't wanna light it up, so I, I'd have to have that discussion with you.
Okay, that, uh, what, what are the materials?
Um, I, I think of going board and batten again, just like my building. Um, I don't really, I, I want to go more with the, the darker. Colors on this one, so it does fade out, um, in some soft grays.
Okay. Any other questions? So you, you, um, I think you've answered a lot, uh, um. We'll get some comments to you tomorrow and, uh, we'll, we'll move this along.
No, I appreciate that and, you know, again, anything you guys need to know, just call me. I'm ready, available.
Okay, all right, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Good night.
You too.
Uh. I don't have any other, uh, new business, uh, we may have a couple of, uh, work sessions if Steve turns this around. Um. I want to thank everybody. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Thanks, and.
And bye.